Welcome to the Thursday, April 2nd, 2020, Meeting of the Planning Board. As you can see, we have quite a different approach this evening, so I have a bit of a script to read. So if you could please bear with me, this could take a couple of minutes. First is a preliminary matter. This is Steve Boulay, Chair of the Planning Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear from me. I'm going to just do the boarding, Planning Board members first only, and then I'll ask when we open up the individual hearings for the individuals to present themselves as they do during the normal course of business. So, Mr. Rota Lakus.
Yes, I have no comments this month, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not coming, just asking you to voice that you're here.
I am here, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Yes, sir, I am here.
Mr. Jerry.
Yes, I am here.
And unfortunately, we have one of our members is not feeling well this evening, so he is not going to be present. So Mr. Gordon will not be present today. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Bernie Cahill. Bernie, you want to unmute?
I'm mute, I'm here.
Thank you. So, good evening. This opening meeting of the Planning Board is conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable. Public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by telephone, the board members by video, and will be posted on the town's website identifying how many, how the public may join. We are using Google Hangouts meeting. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and that take care not to screen share your computer unless asked by the chairperson or the staff person. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. The meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The Chair will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for this particular item and/or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members first, and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comment or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion, and then for a second, please hold on until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For others in attendance that are expected to be to present, please hold until your name is called to present. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. After your presentation, members of the board committee will be given the opportunity to ask questions. After the members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call each by name and afford up to three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Roll call, roll call vote, excuse me. That being said, I'd like to bring up the first item on the agenda, which is approve and review and approve minutes. There are no minutes presented for this month's meeting. We also, the next item, review and sign bills. There are no bills to be reviewed this meeting. At this time, I will go around the board for board member comments. First person to be called upon, Mr. Rota Lakus.
Again, I have no comments this month, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thomas.
None this month, sir.
Mr. Jerry.
No comments.
So, I would like to say a couple of comments before we begin. So, this is, this is quite a new experience for all of us, and I hope that everything goes as well as I anticipate that it will. This is not the first meeting of this type to be handled this way, and I was able to witness one of them that went fairly well. So I'm encouraged that we can do this well, provided that everybody does what we're expecting is at least mute your phone. Remember to wait to have your name called, run all questions through me, and then we'll avoid any talking over of one another. The other thing I would like to mention to the public audience is if you're watching this on television and you're listening to it on the phone, there is a delay from the SEC on the video feed. So I would recommend that you stay on the phone, you can keep it on speakerphone, and just mute your television, and therefore you won't get caught up in the delayed voice that comes back and forth over the television. Okay, with that being said, we have our first hearing. It's a new public meeting for a new retail and office building request for a de minimis change for location 274 Walnut Street. Are the applicants present?
Yes, I am present.
Could you please introduce yourself for the record?
My name is Brandon Berry, I'm here with Bollering Engineering on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, is there anyone else with you to present this evening?
There is not, no.
Okay, please go forward and present your materials utilizing Mr. Cahill. I'm not sure if you're going to be doing the screen driving, or if Mr. Cahill will drive any documents that you're looking to put up for the public to see.
Bernie, I would defer to you there. Do you want to drive the screen, or would you like me to do that?
I'm happy to put it up right now.
Okay.
Is it up? Can everyone see it?
It's loading for me. Yep, there it is.
And we can, you know, we can just focus in on that left side of the plan, Bernie, where the two affected areas are. So first, I just wanted to start by saying that we really appreciate the town taking the steps necessary to keep the public hearings moving, and allows our clients to keep their developments going, and that keeps our employees hard at work, which is extremely important to us right now. As was mentioned, this is a project at 274 Walnut Street. It involves the construction of a one-story veterinary building and a two-story medical building or office that's to be built on spec. We were before the board in September of 2019, where the plan was approved in its current state, and as our client is getting ready to move to construction, hopefully this spring, they were just doing some modifications and refinement of their plan. The big thing that they had noticed is, in the previous, the approved location of the trash enclosure was going to be the first thing that the customers would see as they entered the site and turned towards veterinary use, and they were just hoping to move that to a less prominent location. So the first area modified there, the red lines you're seeing on the screen are the approved curb lines, and then the black lines are what is, what's being proposed. So the trash enclosure was located just south of the transformer, which is seen with the three circles for the bollards. So we had a trash enclosure there. We're moving that out of that location and proposing one additional parking space there. So that's where you can see the pavement being expanded a little outside that red line, but we are adding back some green space. Moving to the south of the site, we're pushing the trash enclosure to the end of that parking aisle, so it's the last thing that customers see. It's also closer to that rear employee door, so it'll be easier for employees to access when they take the trash out at night. We have, you can see, we're pulling the curb line in there. We've removed the two last spaces in the row to get the trash enclosure out of the steep slope that runs along the front edge of our site along Route 9. So we're proposing a trash enclosure. You can see it kind of mirrors the opposite side of the site now. We've removed those two spaces, proposed a new one in that north section. So we have a net reduction in one space. We had 74 spaces on the approved plan. This space, this plan proposes 73 spaces, and 52 spaces are required by zoning, so we are still compliant. The access to the site, the building locations, site circulation, utility connection, and stormwater management system are unchanged. Really, the just relocating that trash enclosure to a less prominent area was the intent, what we've accomplished. So, pretty minor change that we think is an improvement to the site. With that, I'll toss myself back on mute and see if the board has any questions or comments that I'd be willing to answer.
Thank you very much. I will ask for questions from the board first, Mr. Rota Lakus.
I'm all set with this, this seems de minimis.
Okay, Mr. Thomas.
I have no questions, it is de minimis.
Okay, Mr. Jerry.
I have no comments, I agree with both Mr. Thomas and Mr. Rota Lakus.
Okay, I also agree with everyone that this appears to be a de minimis change. Can I have a motion?
I would move that the board make an actual finding that relocation of the dumpster and the loss of one parking space constitutes a de minimis change.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I am going to go roll call for a vote. Mr. Rota Lakus.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Thank you, and that takes care of that meeting.
Thank you guys, have a good night.
Thank you. You as well. For any persons, I should have asked if anybody in the audience, so I missed that one. I didn't expect there was going to be a question from the audience. Why apologize if there is anyone in the audience that did want to be heard on that. I apologize for that. The meeting is closed, and unfortunately, we can't take any questions at this time. I will try not to make that mistake again. Our next meeting, Continued Public Hearing, is for a common driveway and multifamily development site plan approval and special permit for Whitney Street Home Builders LLC, location 257 Main Street. Are the applicants present? The applicant for 257 Main Street, Mr. Grunier, are you on the line? Bernie, do you, can you tell if Mr. Grunier is online?
I can see that Mr. Venkatas is on the line. I do not see Mr. Grunier yet. We could take it out of order if you want, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let's do that. Well, again, to the, to the public, I just want to express some apologies. We're likely to run into a couple of instances. So let's take this one out of order for now. We'll move on to our next public hearing, which is the Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond Site Plan Modification. Route 20 Nominee Trust and Demula Supermarket Incorporated. It's a new public hearing, location 180, 200, 228 Hartford Turnpike. Decision deadline 90 days from close of hearing. Mr. Thomas, do you have a?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rota Lakus will be recusing.
I do have a legal notice, please bear with me while I read it from my phone. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
The Schuze Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 2nd, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Selectment Meeting Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Schuze, Mass. to hear the application of Kelly Rieho, Trust the Route 20 Nominee Trust Care of Boston Concessions Group, 55 Cambridge Parkway, Suite 200, Cambridge, Mass. 02142, and Demula Supermarkets Incorporated, Care of DSM Realty Incorporated, 881 E, Tewksbury, Mass. 01867, for site plan modification by the Planning Board as required by the Town of Schuze Rezoning by Law, Section 7, Subsection F3, to allow for the partial modification to the location of proposed residential and amenity buildings, the elimination of a garage, and associated modification to grading and infrastructure as shown on plans entitled Site Plan for Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond, 180 to 222 Hartford Turnpike, dated June 19, 2019, and revised on November 25, 2019, and March 11, 2020. Prepared by RJ O'Connell and Associates Incorporated, 80 Montville Avenue, Mass. 02180, stamped by John F. Stoy, John J. Stoy, P.E., and consisting of 24 sheets. The subject, the subject project is located on the south side of Hartford Turnpike and consists in whole or in part of Schuze Reassessors Tax Plate 50, plots 126000 and 128000, and Tax Plate 53, plot 054000. A copy of the plans may be seen in the Office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Schuze, Mass. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The applicant's present?
I'm here for the applicant, Mr. Chairman Mark Donahue, on behalf of the applicant.
Do you have any other persons with you, or are you going to bring this on your own?
No, Roy Smith of RJ O'Connell will be participating in the presentation, and hopefully Mr. Cahill will be helping us with audio, with the visual additions.
I'm sure he will be a fine choice to choose for that. So, all right, so if you would, please bring your, bring your plan forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, Mark Donahue from Fletcher-Tilton on behalf of the applicant. The board will remember that we culminated the activity with regard to the approval of Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond in January of this year, and immediately moved forward in the, in the next level of the planning, particularly as it related to the buildings. Part of that activity from the development team's viewpoint involved value engineering, taking a hard look now with actual contractors as to how costs might be able to be reduced in some fashion through the development. And what we have this evening is a presentation that relates only to the residential component of the development, and presents in two different areas of the site. What we refer to as the easterly node, and because this is a little bit hard without the plan itself, that is plan left as you look at it, the node of the residential there has some changes, and the southerly node, which is the part that is above, if you're looking at the plan, the market basket facility. The easterly node has the most material type of changes that are involved. What it involves essentially, and I'm going to have Mr. Smith review it in more detail with you, but by looking at the location of the buildings and ways to reconfigure the same buildings or substantially the same buildings on the site, we've been able to relocate the buildings to remove a significant retaining wall that was being used on the easterly side to retain the hill as one approaches the Orchard Meadows condominium. Replace that with grading with a reconfiguration of the buildings and a relocation of the clubhouse slightly, and the parking area that supports the clubhouse slightly. And I'm going to have Mr. Smith review those in more detail with you. Those changes came about in part because we were able to take a harder look at the buildings themselves. The building footprints have actually shrunk in a very minor fashion, and we've got a, a display of that, so you can see the material nature of it. Our covering letter with regard to the application indicated that the total gross size of the buildings had been reduced by about 2,000 square feet in total, so it's just a little bit change. That change also involved a reconfiguration between the mix of one bedrooms and two bedrooms. When you approved this plan, there were 126 one-bedroom units and 124 two-bedroom units, or 50.4% of the site being one-bedroom units. With the reconfiguration of the building and making them more efficient, the total number of one-bedroom units has dropped to 116 units, or a reduction in 10 for 46.4% of the mix, and the balance is all in the two bedrooms. There are no units, as you know, exceeding the two bedrooms. That was achieved in part, also allows some additional space to be created for common areas, which has been built into the development itself. Moving to the southerly node, the changes there are not as material as the easterly node or the plan left node, as I referred to it. They involve the removal of a couple of the garages that had been built as or proposed as part of the original plan. Those have been substituted now for just surface parking. A reconfiguration of that area has also eliminated a retaining wall, which Mr. Smith will review with you. There are no changes to the total number of units. There is no change to the total number of parking spaces for the overall development, and as Mr. Smith will review, the easterly node, which has the parking that serves not just the units in that node, but also the clubhouse, it still beats substantially what we had before as far as that note's concerned. Those are the nature of the changes that are involved. It ends up being from the residential component, we think, a better plan and a more suitable plan. And with your permission, I'll have Mr. Smith with the assistance of Mr. Cahill walk you through the details of the plans.
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you, Mark. Bernie, if you could call up Slide 2, which is the permitted east residential.
Yes, one second.
Not a problem.
Slide 2, okay.
Good evening, my name is Roy Smith. I work for RJ O'Connell and Associates. And what you're looking at here is the easterly node site. So if you can zoom in on that area, Bernie, a little bit.
Yeah, is that zoomed in enough?
Yep, that's, that's zoomed in enough. You'll see that we have the same amount of buildings in this easterly residential node, and the reason why the modification happens is if you look along the east side, we have a significant amount of plantings, but we also have two retaining walls, which I'll go into a little bit more detail with a different slide. But this is the permitted site plan. It has six-unit building and 224-unit building leasing and amenity clubhouse building and a pool. It also has three garages and the associated parking associated with that layout. If you could go to Slide 3A, Bernie, now, which is the proposed versus the permitted.
Yes, one second.
Not a problem.
It should be sharing in one second.
So this is the proposed modification. As you can see, we still have 136-unit building, 224-unit buildings, a clubhouse, which is slightly smaller than what was permitted, and a pool and the associated parking. What you see on the left side of the plan is a grayed out area, two red lines. That, those two red lines are, were the previously permitted retaining walls that the current design has eliminated. We've replaced those walls and moved that edge of pavement along the easterly edge of this easterly node further west by about 30 feet. And that allowed us to, excuse me, allowed us to eliminate that, those retaining walls, and it allowed us to modify the parking in the layout of the buildings in the clubhouse/leasing amenity building. One of the other changes is, the permitted plan had three garages. This easterly node is down to one garage, and then the associated parking associated with that. The parking loss in this easterly residential node is a total of 12 spaces, and the majority of those spaces are lost associated with the parking next door to the leasing amenities building. The permitted plan had a parking area on the upper side of the plan closest to what is the leasing/amenities building. So what we did in this modified site plan is move that leasing and amenities buildings parking right in front of the leasing and amenities building, rather than behind it, or to the side of it, like it was permitted. That leasing and amenities building and associated parking went from 14 spaces down to six spaces. So that was the majority of the loss of spaces. If you recall correctly, we also had some reserved spaces associated with this easterly residential node, but that doesn't, we didn't include those in the parking requirements because we met the parking requirements of the town, which is 1.5 ratio per unit. So we didn't include those, and we had a condition that we could go and build those in the future. This, this modified site plan does not have any reserved parking spaces. Like I said, the, the basic premise of this is to do some value engineering, as Mark Donahue alluded to, is to eliminate those two large retaining walls and bring in that edge of parking and move it further west away from the Orchard Meadows property line. The clearing limit stayed the same along that, that roadway, and so forth and so on. And now we have a graded slope that replaces that, those retaining walls. If you could go to, now I'm going to move to the southern residential node, and then I'm going to do that presentation, and then just quickly review the units themselves, the building units footprint changes themselves. So if you could go to Slide 4, Bernie, which is the permitted south residential.
Yes, one second, pulling it up now. Okay, it should be on in just a second.
Thank you. So what you're looking at here is what's already permitted, Mark Donahue was alluding to. We had three garages in this southerly residential node. We also had a retaining wall along the left side of the plan, which is the east side of the plan, and we had some reserved parking. The modified plan, which is Slide number five, if you could call that up, Bernie, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, doing it now, one second. It should be on. Should be on now.
Excellent. As you can see, we've replaced and eliminated the three garages and made the surf, those surface-level parking spaces, which are much more efficient. We also were able to eliminate the retaining wall along the left side of the plan or the east side of the plan. The clearing limit stayed the same, so, but in the parking, the parking, we actually increased the parking in the southerly residential by nine spaces. So overall, from a parking perspective, it essentially stayed the same. We lost 12 in the easterly residential node. We gained nine in the southerly residential node. So we have a minus of three parking spaces. And the parking ratio stays about the same. The permitted parking ratio per, per unit was a 1.56, and that has dropped by those three spaces down to a 1.55. The town's parking requirement for residential is 1.5 spaces per unit. So we still meet that, and as Mark was saying, the amount of units stayed the same. And that there was a slight change in print and natural buildings as well. I'm going to move to that now, Bernie. If you could call up Slide 6, which is the building footprint, A, 36 unit.
Sure, one second. Okay, should be loading now. Can you see it?
Yeah. Thank you. So what you're looking at here is an overlay of the approved or the permitted building footprint for a 36-unit building versus the currently modified building footprint. The currently modified footprint is shown in red. The gray dashes are the permitted building units. As you can see, the foot jogs slightly more than what was permitted, but it's a more efficient building. And that changed for all the 36, all the building units, which there's nine residential buildings. It changed for the 36 residential buildings, the 24 residential unit buildings, and the 30 building units. And those were And those were incorporated into the modified site plan as well. Uh, with that said, that kind of does a general overview of both the easterly residential node modifications, the southerly residential node modifications, and then the residential building footprint modifications as well. So I'm gonna turn it back to the board and would be happy to answer any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Um.
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Donahue.
Our presentation. Uh, these plans were submitted uh, when filed to Graves Engineering for review. Uh, as their peer review, as you'll recall, they did a review of the initial site plan. They have submitted to you a letter dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, um, which I think speaks for itself that they find that they um, they have no issues with any of the proposed modifications. Their review included looking at some of the more detailed changes and some small changes to the the drainage systems and the like. Uh, the March twenty-fourth letter also indicates that the set of plans that you have now responded to what were some open comments that existed back in January from their letter. Um, that doesn't mean that this is the final set. We're still preparing a final, final set um, when after the board's action this evening. But it it does appear that those plans and all those issues have now been resolved to um, peer reviews uh, comments and and approval. Uh, we also have the benefit of the planner's letter uh, to you of March twenty-sixth. Uh, have had a chance to review that um, and discuss that with Mr. Cahill. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. I'll go around the board. Uh, Mr. Rortle, I'm sorry, Mr. Rortle, this is recusing himself. Um, Mr. Thomas.
The only question I had was that um, the uh, the footprints of the building, the footprints are changing. What about the square footage? I I may have missed that. I'm not sure.
Yeah, the square footage changed slightly. I think Mark alluded to that in his opening comments. Uh, it it, they got slightly reduced.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Per building.
Okay, that was my only question.
Okay, Mr. Jerry.
Um, along the same lines as Mr. Thomas, I was just wondering with the changes of the footprints of the buildings, are they still consistent architecturally with what was discussed before?
Uh, they are. Uh, some of that has been advanced a little bit further uh, in into some of the designs. There were some, uh, if if you were to look again at the plans as far as the footprints, there were some uh, 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 areas that uh, kind of a butted or came out of the building in some fashion. Some of those have been uh, brought back into the structure. So some of the the lands strike that the architecture has changed, but it's it's essentially consistent with what you've seen before.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, um, I'm I'm gonna continue on that same line. So when I look at the architectural drawings near the back of the new plan set, it looks like these demonstrate the same kind of jogs that were in the original site plan. Can you uh, explain that a little bit to me, please? I'm looking at, um, for instance, just as an example, sheet A twenty, eight, I'm sorry, A two hundred.
Uh, I'm afraid I don't have a full set of plans with me, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so I'm not quite sure uh, what we're looking at. We'll see if Roy can find it as he leaves.
This, okay, um, well, when I look at these particular, uh, this set, hopefully, I don't know, Bernie, if you have, um, if you have the ability to get to the A two hundred sheet.
I was just pulling up now, Mr. Chairman, if you wait one second while I control, I will pull it up. Okay, it should be up in a second. Can you see it now?
Yes, I can. So when you look at that, it looks like those jogs are coming out, whereas the um, one of the last slides that um, Mr. Smith put out there, it looked like more, it was more straight in the front of the buildings. So I, you look at, you know, the the lower part of the drawing looks correct. It looks like um, it doesn't have the chalk. It's it's very strange looking to me. That's a, I just want to clarify, make sure that the architectural renderings that are in the plants that we currently have is a good representation of where we're going to end up.
I I could speak to that maybe in a more general fashion, Mr. Chairman. Uh, part of the process of the value engineering uh, was a shift in the architects who had done the original plan to this set. Um, so I'm, I frankly don't know whether the plan you're looking at was a historical one and it got carried over and is supposed to be reflected there. Uh, it's a fair question that we can certainly resolve and make sure that particularly as the architecture continues to evolve, we get a final set to Mr. Cahill and we can, um, if you wish, come back to another meeting of the board, uh, not in the form of a modification, we would ask, um, and review with you with any specificity that might be required.
That that would be fine. Um, also, I just got another question. So the two-bedroom configuration changed, so the percentages flipped from majority and they're they're very close, I get it, uh, one way or the other, but majority was single bedroom and now the majority is two-bedroom, where I believe it was increased by ten units. Can you give an uh, an idea as to what we think the impact would be to the school system based on that? I don't remember coming across any of the data on that.
Um, I think when you go back and look at the fiscal analysis, um, it didn't distinguish uh, as far as residents significantly uh, between the ones in two bedrooms. It talked more about the the nature of the uh, mixed use development and the size of the units. Uh, it is, um, you know, uh, I think it it may have some impact. The mix has gone by up by ten. Um, the common area, as I said before, I think was has actually been reduced, um, that's available in each one of the buildings. Um, so there might be some modest change, but I would, but my recollection is that the overall impact for the two hundred fifty units was relatively minor. And so a change of the ten units out of the two hundred and fifty would be fairly de minimis, might be.
Okay. Okay, um, I don't have any other questions. Does anyone of the, uh, anyone else on the board have any additional questions? You can speak freely.
No, sir.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Um, we can try this first. I'm not expecting too much, so if we can try um, maybe chiming in, if there is someone from the from the public, please unmute your device and say your name and address, please. I'm gonna go with, we probably don't have anybody from the audience. So at this time, uh, Mr. Thomas, I wouldn't have to take a motion to close the hearing.
I move. We close the hearing, entitled Edgema Crossing at Flint Pond Site Plan Modification, twenty nominee trust in the move supermarkets incorporated, location eighty-two hundred, two twenty eight, Hartford Turnpike.
Do I have a second? Mr. Jerry.
A second.
I'm moving a second. All in favor, Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And I am in favor. So now we are at a point we can discuss, we uh, we'd like to deliberate on this. Um, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Thomas.
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision entitled Edgema Crossing at Flint Pond Site Plan Modification Route Twenty Nominee Trust in the move supermarkets incorporated, one eighty, two hundred and two twenty eight, Hartford Turnpike.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And I'll go for roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. So you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're very welcome.
Stay safe.
Thank you as well. Um, I did not mention this earlier, but for anyone that um, is completed or concluded their business with the planning board, you're certainly welcome to stay on and and watch. But if you could uh, ensure that you mute your device, um, that would be very, very helpful. Okay, thank you. Um, we are now going to go backwards to uh, previous hearing. Is uh, Mr. Grunier in in attendance?
I I'm here, thank you.
Okay, so we will uh, go back to the next hearing, which is a continued public hearing for a common driveway and multifamily development site plan approval and special permit. Whitney Houston, I'm sorry, Whitney Street Home Builders LLC, uh, two fifty-seven Main Street. And if the proponents could please introduce themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, John Grunier here uh, with JM Grunier Associates on behalf of Whitney Street Home Builders.
Okay, do you have anyone else that will be presenting with you?
Um, I believe Benan Casa is is here with me.
Okay, very good. Um, we've, uh, I don't know if you've been watching along, but if you um, are looking for any materials to be demonstrated on the screen, could you please work through Mr. Cahill and have him put the um, the documents up for you?
Sure, that would be great. Thank you. Uh, Bernie, if you could just put up the uh, the layout plan, which I believe is um, sheet three of of the site plan set.
Yes, one second while it load. I will let you know. It should be up, hold on. So I have, this is the dated, excuse me, dated March seventeenth is the most recent plan?
I I believe so, yes.
Okay, so let me just scroll down to. Yep, this is the site development plan. Go ahead, John.
Sure, so um, these are the same plans that we have presented to the board at the last hearing. Um, if you recall, um, the board needed some time to be able to uh, review these plans because we had uh, just made some changes to them um, in response to both the board and uh, to the DPW. Uh, the changes to the DPW, they just wanted us to modify some of the service connection uh, hookups, which we met with the DPW about and um, made those changes accordingly. Um, really had no impact on the layout of the site, uh, so to speak. Um, the last change that we did make to make to the plan was um, we reviewed the number of units for the the rear, the most rear lot, the multifamily. Um, if you recall, our original submittal had a total of six units. Um, and all of, with six units, we still met all of our parking setback, open space um, and lot coverage requirements. Um, the board did have some reservations about having a total of six units. So uh, in response to that, we have subsequently reduced the total number of units down to four. Um, you will also recall that we um, submitted materials. We had a full traffic study performed for this site, um, which was, uh, they did traffic counts um, for both morning and peak um, driving conditions. And uh, the results of that were that we have plenty of site distance um, with the total number of increased numbers of cars. Um, I believe in the the morning or the evening, it's one additional car like every eight or nine minutes. And um, having the cycle of the lights over um, adjacent to the to the west that um, there are breaks in the traffic, so there's no issues um, for vehicles coming in and out, especially during peak hours. So we had a full traffic report that we submitted for the board to review. Um, so again, this is the same plan that we submit, that we uh, reviewed at the last hearing um, and presented. And um, my understanding was board just need a little bit more time to review those documents that that we submitted last month. And so this is really no, no different, the only, the biggest change was that we reduced the total number of multifamily units to four uh, within the multifamily zoning district. Um, and I put it to Bernie, if you have any other comments to make or or the chair.
Uh, Mr. Cahill, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, I think Mr. Grunier summarized his changes uh, well.
Okay, thank you. I will go around the board for questions. Uh, Mr. Jerry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Boulay. I I guess my main question uh, is in regards to the traffic report that we received that was dated March second that we got uh, just before the last meeting. Specifically, if you could address the capacity analysis that was conducted. Um, it states in the report that that occurred on February seventeenth, uh, which by my uh, calendar here would be President's Day and also school vacation week. So I guess I would question whether or not this report is accurate accurately reflecting an average weekday at this site.
Mr. Grunier.
I, yes, I believe I can, if, I think I can hit present. Um, Bernie, can I, I have um, I believe sections of the uh, of the traffic report that I can, I can put up on the screen.
Uh, yes, certainly, one second.
Right.
So up now, this is page five, I believe. Uh, Mr. Jerry is referring to this part right here that says uh, on February seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Um, I, I'm not sure exactly what page that it is on in the report, but they do make modifications based on um, the the season and the time. And so they do have an adjustment. Oh, I believe, actually, it's in that same paragraph, Bernie, it says, um, uh, according to mass DOT adjustment factors, data collection in February need to be increased by multiplying by a factor of one point oh one. So it says the following diagram shows the adjusted turning movements counts for the intersection. So there are adjustments that they do make um, for when, when the uh, when the traffic count is is made, so they do have adjustments made based on, based on that. And as you can see, it's it's minimal.
Well, I would imagine that that adjustment is based off of the average day in February. I'm not sure that specifically that day that would likely be the case. I would just question how accurate that those counts really are. I guess that that would be my one question, Mr. Boulay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jerry. Uh, Mr. Thomas.
Um, again, I have reservations about the density about of it and, you know, obviously the traffic is an issue. And to Mr. Jerry's point, there was no school nor most people had the day off of work that day, so that traffic study doesn't hold a lot of merit, in my opinion. And we've seen the same, you know, we've seen the plan multiple times and I still have reservations about the traffic and the density of it.
Okay, is that all you have?
That's it.
Okay, um, I I will echo your comments. I I I've been um, kind of harping on the density piece of this from the get-go. Um, certainly, the um, internal circulation as well as the external circulation is quite a bit of a concern. And I know it's quite a bit of concern for the residents as well. Um, and I agree with Mr. Jerry's opinion on the um, on the traffic study. I think a modification of ten percent is not, I think, representative, but that's just me. Um, I forgot, Mr. Rortle, you're back here. I I skipped right for you. Would you, do you have any questions or something of the uh, like?
I, I'm not a traffic engineer or a statistician, but I don't see how uh, taking the traffic count for one day and then multiplying it by a factor of one point oh one percent, uh, when that day is President's Day, a holiday during school vacation week is uh, gonna give you an accurate reflection of what goes on there. I I drive that road every day, um, or I was at the time when the, yeah, my son was uh, going to school. Um, and I can tell you that uh, the traffic uh, uh, during school, uh, not in the dur- during a school day is certainly uh, a lot uh, more significant than a a vacation day or a or a week when school is off. So I I don't put much stock in this traffic study.
Okay. Okay, with that, um, I I believe I mentioned the things that I was interested in speaking of. Um, this is a public hearing. Uh, we're gonna try this. I know there's probably a lot of people um, that have been present in prior meetings. And if you wish to ask a question uh, or get some clarification, I'm gonna, let's try it, let's try it easy the first time. Let's first start with um, if you could, if someone could start unmuting your phones and then just please, as one person is speaking, if you hear of someone speaking, please do not try to overspeak. And then we'll try, I'll try to get a list of names for those that are interested in asking questions. And um, I will get back to each of you to ask your questions. So please, the audience, for the first person, could you please unmute your phone and give me your name and address? I heard something very faint in the background.
Yes. Hi, this is Lena Passu.
Nina Passu?
Yep, twenty-four Irida Road.
Okay. Is there another one? Hold on, I'm just looking for names at the moment. I will. I I need to have an idea of how many people are willing to ask questions, and I will get back to each one of you independently. Okay? So if you could please re mute your phone away from me to call your name. Is there another one in the audience that wishes to be heard? There may be some slight technical difficulty. So while that, while people are trying to figure out how they can go forward and unmute your phone and give me your name, we can go back to Mrs. Passu, and you may ask your question.
Sure. And I think just to clarify for other people who may be on the phone, I think you have to press star six if you're on your phone to unmute it. You just don't press the unmute button. But my 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 concerns are my my, what I have to say is more of a comment, not a question in regards to the traffic study as well as the density of the property. First and foremost, the property that's existing that's in the front, the new construction that is a blue house, we recently found out is a home for people with brain injuries and disabilities. It's made for five residents who will be living there. And I had an opportunity to look up the company who is putting in this this property. And through my research of it, it requires a lot of in and out of traffic. There will be food services, laundry services, nurses coming in and out as well as other people visiting those residents. So that adds to the traffic that I believe is already in existence there. My second comment would be towards my observations of the in and out of traffic there, even with without the homes being built. I was on a walk a couple days ago and noticed a car exiting that two fifty-seven property to take a right towards the lights in the intersection. And obviously, during these times during the pandemic, there is not a lot of traffic at all. And when that car did take a right out of that property, the so the car coming down St. John's Hill had a slam on its brakes in order to avoid hitting that car. And that was just one vehicle. So that's my concern. I think with the property that's being built there right now, there's added traffic on top of what was already concerning for both safety of the people living there and safety for the people driving up and down Main Street. So those would be my comments. And I appreciate the board taking the time to hear my comments.
Yeah, welcome. Yeah, and thank you for your comments. As far as I can comment a little bit about the traffic, the house that you described that's going to have the the brain injury residents, that is part of an A and R lot that was not put in front of this board at any time. But it does have a factor, certainly in the traffic. And I believe that that also plays into the traffic study because I don't believe that that is even operational yet. So I think it's going to have an impact as well. Is there someone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? I hear I hear somebody maybe trying to hit buttons. He may or may not be successful.
Steve, could we ask Mrs. Passu again what people pressed on their phone to unmute them?
Yes, you have to press star six and then it'll unmute you.
Okay, thank you.
Any others in the audience can hear that and do the same?
Hello, yeah, can you hear me?
I can. Can I have your name and address, please?
Yes. This is Joy Wu. I live in two fifty-seven Main Street. So everything you are talking about just around my property. So I want to draw your attention, all the board members about the lot one. I am a medical professional in the pediatric department of UMass. I know exactly how much you need to take care of five brain injury patients in lot one. That will be twenty-four seven medical service with at least one nurse and the two caretakers, three shifts per day. Plus, the lady already mentioned previously, you have to have medical services. You need to take those patients to MRI and to get the checkup from time to time. And these patients are wheelchair bound. If you look into that lot one, they have a blueprint hanging out there. Everything is designed for wheelchair bound patients. And they also need to have home housekeeping service and three times a day meal delivery service. This lot one, which is in full service, will add a lot of traffic on that intersection. Not talking about the multifamily building behind our house, only the lot one. I wonder how much that small intersection, it's already very busy and problematic now, can handle that huge demand only from lot one. And I also want to remind everybody, this is a critical decision because it comes with the consequence that you cannot fix later on. So I appreciate every board member pointing out that the traffic study presented by the developer is meaningless because without the lot one in full service, we have no idea how bad the traffic would be. That's my point of view. I sincerely want everybody to take that into consideration. This is not about me or about our neighbors around this small area, but also about parents who has their kids in St. John's and Schufa High School and everybody who commutes on Highway two ninety. That's my point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Could I speak? This is James, James Venen Casa with Whitney Street Home Builders.
Yes, please.
So this is one of the one of seven homes that we are working with CIL to build. They do not have a, they don't have a service that comes in and brings the food in. Not like anybody, you know, if you had delivery to your house, they would do the same thing. They have a kitchen in their home. They are, you know, they're training these people in order to live on their own. They have their own kitchens. You know, this is no different than, you know, there is two people that do work that do care for the four occupants that will be in this house. This house in particular has four, I think it's seventy to eighty year old women that do have brain injuries. We work, I I work a lot with these agencies. And, you know, they're cooking inside the house. They're doing everything that everybody else is doing inside their house. This is a single family home in this in by, you know, master general law, by a lot of things. This is considered a single family home. It's treated as though it is just a single family home.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? I think someone's hitting buttons again. Bernie, can you tell if somebody's trying to access?
I cannot. I can only hear the static that you're hearing.
All right.
Oh, that's okay. Are you? Can you please tell me your name and your address, please?
Ma'am, I think we can hear you. You are unmuted. If you want to start talking, I think we can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, this is Joy Wu again. I have an objection to what the developer said because if he claims there will be only two patients living there, they are going to be self assistants. I want that in writing presenting to the board because from our own experience and also experience from our neighbors, they always tell you something that later that will be completely different. So this is a bitter experience. I want to share with the board members.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We'll give it one more try. Is there anyone else that has any questions from the audience?
Hello?
Hello, please identify yourself.
Lula Rose, Dalton Drive.
Okay. Please go forward.
Yes, with regards to the traffic, I'm glad that everybody's speaking up about it. The question I have is with the multiple units, how many units are there? How many living quarters are there going to be in those?
Okay, Mr. Grenier.
I believe there'll be two to three of them.
Good. Mr. Mr. Lawrence, do you have another follow up question?
Yes, with regards to the traffic and the day it was done and the the time of the week, the fact the holiday and school vacation, the amount of traffic that we all know St. John's brings in at the the morning commute and the afternoon. How is it going to be safe for the in and out of that of the traffic that's going to come in and out? And what's the viewing space as distance when you're looking east coming out and you're going to take a right?
Okay, Mr. Grenier.
Well, based on the comments, obviously, we're going to go back to the traffic engineer and get some updates to his study to address any concerns about about the timing of the study. And in terms of site distances, coming out and turning to the turning right to the west to go through the lights? Is that the question?
Uh, excuse me, I didn't. I didn't get your whole question.
Are you concerned about taking a right and going west through the lights and the site?
Excuse me, I'm I'm sorry. I'm concerned about coming out and taking a left going east.
He did review that as well. That was part of his his review. And based on the speeds, they were adequate lines of sight and and stopping sight distance based on his report. And again, we're going to go back to him and make sure he updates. In my opinion, but we'll find out. I don't think it's going to have any any bearing on on the total traffic. And there's not going to be any improvements needed to be made because there really is limited numbers of cars coming in and out of this site during the peaks. But again, we'll go back to him and make sure he updates those numbers accordingly.
Well, I I think the study has to be done at the proper time when you're going to get the traffic flow. That's the only way you're going to get the proper traffic flow. You can't estimate it if you don't know the traffic flow to begin with.
We're going to go back to him and make sure he updates his numbers accordingly.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audiences that wishes to be heard?
Dean Tippel, eighteen Irida Road.
I'm sorry, Dean?
Yes.
Okay, eighteen Irida Road?
Yes.
Okay, please ask your question.
I noticed from the site plan that the the parking and the turn is going to be shining headlights directly into my backyard. What are you going to do to mitigate that?
Mr. Grenier.
We are proposing a a full line of our variety, oh, no, actually, there are evergreens, fast growing evergreens that will grow in thick so that it will provide year round screening for for any vehicle potential vehicle lights shining in.
Thank you. And any other questions? Dean?
There's that. And my biggest concern is density. This is a residential community, and he's going to be putting in four multifamily. How many units per building are there? Two, three?
Mr. Grenier.
It's a total, a total of four. It's a fourplex building, so four units.
Four units. In a space that's roughly equivalent to any lot on this road, that's kind of steep as far as population density. Why do you want to encroach upon this residential community with such a high population density spot?
Mr. Grenier.
I I don't know that we're encroaching. We meet all zoning setbacks. We are in a multifamily zone. We meet all of the actually, we are less than what we could build with only four units. We reduce that. We could fit six units in there. We reduce it down to four. We meet all of the zoning requirements, setback requirements, parking requirements, lot coverage requirements, et cetera. So and we have, we're supposed to have one and a half spaces, parking spaces per unit. So with four units, that would be a total of six spaces, and I believe we have between garage parking, parking in front of the the garages, and we have five overflow spaces. We have twenty-one spaces. So we're three and a half times the required parking. So we more than exceed any of the zoning requirements, and we're just working within the regulation.
Good, thank you.
I'm just concerned about the regulations. When we bought this house and when all of our neighbors bought their houses, we were told that that was not a buildable piece of property. Yet, right now, we're being told that this is a buildable piece of property. My biggest concern is what else is going to be changed to impact us and reduce our property values?
I can I can answer that a little bit. The first of all, zoning changes frequently. One of the things that this board does not consider ever is property values or building costs, to be honest with you. The financial impacts are are not part of the purview. We are bound to hold developers accountable for meeting the rules and regulations and the bylaws of the town of Suesbury. And that's where we're, that's where we're at. So is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Hello, this is Joy Wu again. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yes, I want to add one request. Jerry, if you want a traffic study meaningful, the only traffic study will be conducted after the lot one in full service. Then there will be no ambiguity how bad the traffic would be after that one is surveyed. That will be unbiased and comprehensive.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Yeah.
Please introduce yourself.
Paula Belger, one Irida.
Okay, please ask a question.
I I and some of my other neighbors do have water problems in this area. A lot of the high level of groundwater. How is this building going to impact the problems that we already have?
Good. Mr. Grenier.
We did a full drainage design that was reviewed by the town consultant engineer. We are capturing all of the paved runoff as well as the roof runoff. We are recharging that into the ground, putting it into subsurface chambers so that we are reducing the amount of water that comes off the site after it is built compared to what it is right now. And again, we went out reviewed the soils. We did a full drainage analysis and a drainage design that was fully reviewed by the town consultant engineer who has given it his blessing.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions from the audience?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we may have gotten all the questions from the audience. So let me go back to the board. Has the board heard all the information you need in order to close this hearing? Mr. Jerry.
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes, sir. I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Rotalakis.
I think I'm all set.
And I am all set as well. I will entertain a motion.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Based on some of the comments from the butters, we would like, we go back to our traffic engineer and have him relook at the time of his study and make any modifications or, or adjustments that he needs to make on that. So we would like to have the opportunity to go back to our, our traffic engineer and have him relook at, at some of his, his traffic number.
So the only, the only concern I have with that, Mr. Grenier, is first of all, for this traffic study to have any credence whatsoever, I believe school would need to be in session and the construction of the A and R lot needs to be in operation as well. So I, I don't know what's going to happen with the state. I can tell you that it's not going to be open anytime before May. And that's probably going to be extended depending on what's happening here. I'm not sure what the time schedule is for the, the unit that's being constructed in front of the, of a property. I'm not too certain that a, a traffic study is going to make that much of a difference, in my view, as far as information. I think we have a lot of information that we can ascertain from all the hearings that we've had thus far. So I, I will defer to the board to see if they agree that we should potentially continue this or if we have enough information. I believe the board said that we had enough information to, to close the public hearing. So we'll re-poll the board. Mr. Thomas, you're on my screen first, so I'll ask you.
I have enough information, sir.
Mr. Rotalakis.
I think I have enough information.
Mr. Jerry.
I also feel as though we have enough information.
And I believe I have enough information as well. So I'll now entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do you want to give the address, Steve?
Oh, 257 Main Street, site plan review and special permit common driveway.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll poll the, the members. Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Rotalakis.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor. Given the fact that we have quite a bit of information, plus all the public comments that have happened over these several meetings, I would suggest that we take some time to review this information in greater detail as a board and be in a position to have a deliberative answer at our next scheduled meeting, which I believe is April, I'm sorry, May 7th. If that's not correct, let me see. Does anybody know offhand if it's May 7th?
Correct, May 7th is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments to that suggestion?
No, as the public hearing is closed, I guess.
I'm asking the board, yeah. No, I'm asking the board if anybody has any, if they, if, if they think that we should take some time to review all the information that we've received and be in a position to have a deliberative answer at our next meeting.
I agree with that. I don't think we should, I think we should deliberate and then decide at our next meeting.
Mr. Jerry.
I also agree with that.
Okay, so what I would suggest for the members of the audience, there will be no more public comment, but you're welcome to join in our next hearing, which is on May 7th, likely to be broadcast virtually again. Who knows? Maybe, maybe things change quickly and we'll have an actual physical meeting, but there will be no public comment at that point. But we will have an answer relative to the site plan. Thank you. Our next item of business is proposed zoning bylaw changes for the annual town meeting on May 18. This is a new public hearing. Mr. Thomas, do you have a public notice?
I do, I'm pulling up.
Sure, thank you.
Hold on one second, sir. Okay, I have it here. Can you hear me?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, please, continue.
In according, again, I'm going to read this off my phone. In accordance with the provisions of MGI, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 2nd, 2020, at 7:00 PM, in the Selectments Meeting Room at the Richard D. County Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass. Regarding proposed amendments to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw as follows. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the Town of Shrewsbury, Section 2, definition, Section 3A, establishment of district, Section 3B, district intent, Section 6, Table 1, use regulation schedule, by establishing the Town Center as a new district, inserting new definitions and new uses for the Town Center District and inserting the Town Center District info to the use regulation schedule or to take any action in relation thereto. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the Town of Shrewsbury relative to Section 18, area frontages, yard and lot coverages, requirements, Section 16, off-street parking and loading areas, Section 19, signs, Section 20, site plan by inserting the Town Center District into the procedures and standards of the zoning bylaw as relates to parking, signage, actions, and site plan review and approval or to take any other action in relation thereto. Article, to see if there, if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the Town of Shrewsbury relative to Section 7, development of sites and location of buildings and structures by inserting the new subsection 10, sounds to Town District or to take any other action in relation thereto. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map of the Town of Shrewsbury by creating and establishing the boundaries for a new Town Center District or to take any other action in relation thereto. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the Town of Shrewsbury, Section 6, Table 1, use regulation schedule to allow for marijuana cultivator and craft marijuana cultivator cooperative in a limited industrial zoning district or to take any action in relation thereto.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cahill.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Good. Okay, so we discussed last time at the meeting, at our last meeting, we had a workshop where we, or I went through the proposed zoning for the Town Center pretty much from beginning to end. So we've done that once. That's what it was for. We're not going to do that again tonight. I will say before I start, for anyone watching at home or listening on their phones right now, that you can go to the proposed Town Center rezoning webpage that we have up and all of the articles we are discussing this evening, you can find there, they're the most up-to-date articles for your review. So if you do have any comments and you didn't get to see this live tonight or you didn't call in, you can email myself or Emily Larson at the Planning Department and we will get back to you and share your comments with the Planning Board. So I just wanted to start off with that, Mr. Chairman. So I thought the best way to do this tonight would be to go through section by section. Obviously not word for word this time. We're going to try to keep it brief and to the point. So I'm going to open up, I'm going to give a brief overview of each section, each article that we're talking about. Keeping in mind, article numbers have not been assigned yet by the, by the board of selectmen. So we're going to just call them Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, but there might be different article numbers in the end. So we are, I'm going to start by going through them and then we can talk about the, if you guys have, if you, the Planning Board have questions or the members of the public, they can phone in now. So taking it from the top, the first article, we're calling it Article 1 for now, for our purposes, has to do with the new definitions that are being proposed and the changes to the use table. So I wanted to open it up there. I'm not going to go through all the definitions. I was going to see, do any of you have questions or comments or concerns about any of the changes in those two sections? That is, Table Number 1, the use table, and the new definitions that are being proposed or any recommendations. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, to go down the list.
Okay, I only had one question, and I believe after a small conversation with you, I, I think I, I got cleared up. But in case anybody else that may have been reading the definitions, I thought there might have been a conflict, which it turns out there is not, on page 7, where there's a definition defining of, of other things, including veterinary hospitals, stables, kennels and so forth, that would be allowed under the Town Center District with special permit by the Planning Board. And then later in the document on page 16, on the driving, drive-in establishment, there was a reference to domestic animals and keeping other than customer, customary, other than customary household pets that was not allowed. And I wasn't sure if there was a conflict between the vet hospital and domestic animals and, I mean, scale. To find it a little better for me, so if you want to, just please tell the audience what you've told to me and...
No, absolutely. And I looked at it again this morning before our meeting tonight. The differences that you're looking at is the first one is for something more like an animal hospital, a veterinary clinic that we're all familiar with, taking our pets there, dogs or cats for appointments. The keeping of domestic animals is, I think the key word there is domestic, so it's not a business. It's your personal possession of an animal that's not a traditional dog or cat. So these, I think, and I think where there is, this goes back to is, and there's a few different versions, as I was looking again today, of different things regarding farms and farm animals and the like. And I think the thing is, is that we have to keep in mind, zoning in Shrewsbury was created in 1967, which is now 53 years ago, and Shrewsbury was a very different town than it is today. It was a lot more of a farming community than even a veteran community in some ways. So I think a lot of that has to do with that, the keeping of domestic animals. We're talking things like chickens and geese and so on and so forth. Versus the other thing, which is more of a commercial purpose, which is your veterinary clinic, your kennels. I think one of them, stables, I don't think there are too many stables left in town. So it is, it was, is a good point. It was a good question.
Good, thank you. Does anyone else on the board have a question? I will poll the board. Mr. Jerry.
I did actually have one question, just regarding the definition that you have there, Bernie, for accessory dwelling unit. And then that versus if you go forward to page, I think it was also on page 16, where it says that the dwelling unit for a watchman or caretaker when contained in the same structure permitted use is not allowed. How would you differentiate that from an accessory dwelling unit?
I'm glad you asked. So hold on a second. Let me pull those up for... Do you want me to actually pull them up or do you want me to just speak to them, Mr. Chairman?
If you feel that it would be better to bring it up, you're, you're welcome to. It's better for the audience, I believe, because we have it, we were actually able to read it ourselves.
Right, certainly. So one second, let me pull it up. Okay, so accessory dwelling unit was...
Page 16.
Right, but right there, you can see it. Can everyone see that on their screens?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So accessory dwelling unit, so, right, so that is essentially what an in-law apartment is, except for there is no requirement to be a blood relative, something which, in my professional opinion, is, is getting a little outdated. The whole blood relative thing. We define families quite differently these days and more flexible. So accessory dwelling unit, that is where you have essentially a small apartment on your property. And again, if you go down to, you said it was page 16, I always forget.
Yes, it is 16.
16. Go down to... Overnight. Okay, it's somewhere here.
It's the second, it's the second use down on page 16.
Oh, dwelling unit for a caretaker. So as it happens, for the first time in anyone's memory here, about a month or two ago, someone approached us for a caretaker. So no one in living memory could remember someone actually using this use. But I think the difference is, again, is one of them is for a more commercial purpose. So when you have a watchman or a caretaker, I think these days of places like extra space storage, where they have a onsite residential person, and I know this from speaking to the person I, who, who I used to store stuff in, how he moved around the country with his, his wife, and they would give him a residential establishment onsite. And his job was to take care of all of the storage units onsite, you know, he was the day and night watchman, if you will. So he had 24-hour kind of access to the site and he was meant to take care of it in a security fashion. And I think this goes back again to a time when we didn't have so many CCTV cameras and so on. Whereas the accessory dwelling unit is more of, again, it's like an in-law apartment, except for it doesn't have to be your in-law. And there, there's not necessarily, there's not a business relationship there, right? Someone is, is just, they're living there for the sake of needing a place to live. So does that make sense, Tim?
I understand what you're saying. I just wonder if there's some ambiguity there because if I wanted to rent a unit to someone, you know, under your definition of accessory dwelling unit, then I decided later to employ that person as a gardener or say they're a nurse and they're taking care of one of my relatives who lives in the home. It just struck me that there could be, there's a lot of gray area between those two that could prove to be problematic since they, one is allowed and one is not.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy, what would you suggest? I'm happy to take a suggestion. Were you thinking by right or special permit perhaps as the same?
I guess I just felt like the dwelling unit for a watchman or caretaker could be allowed based on just putting in the accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
So I, I'm not sure that, I guess I see much of a difference there. I understand what you're saying, I guess, in the more traditional case, but I just wonder how you define caretaker could really change, I guess, how this is interpreted.
That's a, you make a really good point.
Or taking care of property or what are you taking care of, but, you know?
Right, yeah, and I don't even believe we have a definition for watchman or caretaker. So I'm happy to entertain that and I will make a note to make a change for, to changing it from no to a yes. So be consistent with accessory dwelling now. I think that's a really good catch.
That's all I had, but everything else I was very comfortable with. Great job.
Thank you. Mr. Rotalakis.
I'm all set. I think that Bernie's done a good job. And again, I think that we'll wait for a user and invariably we'll end up having to tweak the bylaw just like we did the Lakeway bylaw. So I think this is a good first go of it.
Good, thank you. Mr. Thomas.
I addressed my concerns with Bernie the other day about the parking issue, so that's good. To Tim's point, though, I never, I didn't really catch that yet. That's a very broad definition of what a caretaker could be or is or, you know, I guess you could say that anybody could be taking care of anything. So good catch, Tim. I didn't see that. But other than that, I'm satisfied.
That's why we have such a good board.
Well, thank you all. I'd like to still continue on and go to the next article. So that was the use table and definitions. I'd like to move on to the next section, which is the, oops, hold on. Which is, I call Article 2, but really this is the, this article is to create the new subsection of the bylaw to establish the Town Center District. And I'm just going to go through it real fast, section by section. Well, not so fast, but... So at the top of this is the first section, hold on, why don't I just share it? I'm going to share it, Mr. Chairman. So we have something to go with here. Can everyone see it now at the top?
Yes.
So I'll zoom in if we need to. So the first section here is, this is going to be the, so this is what it would look like starting at section U here at the top, where you can see the hand. So the first section here is, this is going to be the, so this is what it would look like, starting at section U here at the top, where you can see the hand. This is the purpose of the town center district, so this is just explaining to applicants, to town residents, to future planning boards and current planning board members. What it is that we're trying to achieve with the district. The second section here is criteria for special permits in the town center district. These are going to be the criteria that the planning board uses when evaluating a new development in the town center. So I'm going to stop there and see, does anyone have any questions, concerns or comments for these two sections?
Yes, sir.
No, sir.
No.
Nope.
All right. Moving right along, the next section speaks to the dimensions and intensity regulations of what would be allowed in the center. So in terms of minimum lot size areas, minimum frontages and setbacks. I did want to note that through a special permit. At the moment, what's being proposed is that someone could have a larger setback. For the rear yard setback, oh no, sorry, not the rear yard setback, the front yard setback and the side yard setbacks. Were that to come up. This was especially brought up around the reuse of the existing deal site, where someone to come forward with a proposal. That does not include retaining the existing school building. Or does, excuse me, does include existing, keeping the existing school building, of course, you're going to have. Quite a big setback from the front yard, so we don't want to exclude that. But then we thought, well, there could be other instances where this might be a possibility. So we wanted to keep it in there, so the board has some wiggle room, were a very unique or a special proposal to come forward. And the board needed to adjust that setback. So that was kind of the biggest thing I drew out of that. We are talking about two and a half stories. By right, and then by special permit, any forty feet and three stories. So again, we're adding a layer of scrutiny and discretion to the planning board for anything bigger than two and a half stories. So any questions about dimensions before I move on?
Oh, I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Okay.
No, sir.
Good, all right, so moving right along. The next section is design standards and guidelines. And this starts to get into the built environment, as we call it, in the planning world. So what you're actually witnessing, experiencing. The first section is site circulation, which is mostly around emphasizing, differentiating. The emphasis here is on differentiating spaces between cars and pedestrians, making sure that there is a, a significant. Difference in what you're seeing and viewing and experiencing. So are there any questions regarding that section?
No, I'm all set.
None. Fine.
Okay, so hearing none. Moving right along, the next section is property frontage. So this focuses on what is happening between the front of buildings and the edge of pavement. So things like enhancing the pedestrian experience and creating a real sense of place. It talks to things like wider sidewalks, street furniture and the like. Any questions on that? Quite a big section.
No, I, this one, I, I think I like this section one of the, one of the most, because it's got to start giving some guidelines for. For design standards. And, and they are not set in stone, they are guidelines and some of them we can really utilize pretty well.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we also, this is where we have our first really big graphic demonstrating. Essentially what the words say above, which is why I really like having these schematics and images in this, in the zoning. Because sometimes they speak a thousand words, right? And in this case, all those words above it, points one through nine, pretty much you look at this picture and that's, that's all we're saying. Is that what you see in this picture is, is what we're talking about. So it kind of summarizes it well. So without any other comments, the next section flows right into landscaping, of course. So when we're talking about frontages, this is the part that talks about types of landscaping. Recommendations for types of planting and also ultimately who is responsible for upkeep. In this case, it would be the owner of the site that controls the site plan. So the most recent site plan controls and whoever the owner is of the property and owns that site plan. Has ultimate responsibility for upkeep. So I think that's the most important point in that. Any questions about landscaping?
I'm all set.
Fine.
I agree that it should be the property owner's job to maintain the landscaping and not any.
I'm all set.
All right. So the next section is screening. The screening, this is really short, this is just, this was actually brought up at one of our meetings. People were concerned about screening things like HVAC units and the like. So I don't think there's too much to say about that, simply that when they do have rooftop or side of roof or anything else kind of. Utilities that these are fenced off and landscaped, so that people don't walk by looking at them and seeing them. The next section is, the next few sections, then we really start to get into, this is called building form. So building form talks about like the mass of buildings. And it brings, so it talks about massive buildings, how to break up those masses, so we're not getting just large square blocks. It starts to touch on the architecture a little bit, but really it's speaking more to volume and massing than anything else. And we've managed to put in, found two pictures for this. The one on the right is about breaking up the massive building, you could do smaller buildings. And then the example below is when you do have a large building with a blank wall, you could put smaller shops in front. To again, break up the facade and that type of thing. So any questions about building form?
No, I'm all set.
Fine.
All set.
All set.
Okay. So next we really get into the architecture of it, building entranceways and orientations. We talk about roof lines, dormers, right, and fenestration, which is just a fancy way of saying windows. And building materials, so this is really the nitty gritty of the architectural best practices. For creating buildings that are going to be interesting and have attractive features. So we're trying to get away from blank walls, single colors, single materials and the like. And create interesting nooks and crannies, if you will. That aren't just blank facades, right, that have some sort of different depths to them, that have different design materials and the like. So that's kind of the purpose of these next three or so sections regarding design. Does anyone have anything about that to say?
No, I'm all set.
I'm fine.
All set.
All set.
All right, so our last three sections, this is the first of our last, is we move in to talk about lighting. And signage, so specifically the types of lights and signage that are either required and encouraged. Or are prohibited and the ones that are encouraged, kind of the, if you will, the parameters for their designs. So without getting too deep into the details, we give a wide latitude for what can be included. And then kind of are pretty strict about what cannot be included. Things like open neon signs, big plastic can signs and the like. And then also, as I'd mentioned at the previous meeting, we had a very loud positive response toward. What, what's called dark sky lighting, so we decided to actually put in a schematic for that as well, as you can see on the right. Which was not included last time, I don't know if we'll stick with this exact schematic, but I think that's the idea to show the dark sky compliant lighting. And then of course signage, exterior lighting and, and the like. And then prohibited signage, so anything about lighting or signage that, anyone has any questions, comments, amendments?
I think it looks good.
Oh, I'm fine with it.
Yes, looks good. Fine with me.
Good, so this is the one, the section Jay brought up earlier. And again, I think this is kind of maybe the, one of the larger changes to how we typically do business in town. But this really is kind of becoming the standard practice for planning and probably best practice for parking. Which is rather than us set the parameters, right, for different developments. The developments themselves have to propose and be approved a parking report by the planning board. For their site plan or special permit, so this happens during the review process. And the board's going to sign off on it, whether they think it works or not. It's not without any standards at all, their baseline would be the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Which is a nationwide engineering association, if you will, that sets standard for parking. But typically, and I think to Jay's concern, is this is where we really find that the market drives the parking amount. Because if you're a developer and you have a mix, let's say you have a vertical mixed use on your site. You want to make sure that for it to be a successful long-term investment, you want to make sure that that parking works out, right? That you're going to have either onsite parking, shared parking or some other kind of arrangement. And we provide for those in the site, so they kind of blend together. So you can see below as I scroll down, we, we say if there is off-street parking, we really prefer it behind in the rear. If not, if it's on the side, under a special permit, you can do it, but we want some sort of barrier. To be in between it and the pedestrian thoroughfare, we're allowing for remote off-site parking. And we put a schematic in for shared driveways and combined parking lots. So it's all kind of, of one piece, the parking. So I'll pause there and see if anyone has any comments.
I, I understand Jay's concern about the shared parking potential issue, but I think you're, you're, you're right Bernie. I mean, this is, this is the whole kind of nuts and bolts of what we want to have happen down in this particular area. So I think the, the market will dictate a lot of the parking issues that I think Jay may be concerned about. But I, I'm all set other than that.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm fine with it.
Also fine.
I'm fine with it.
All right, thanks. And I think to Steve Rota Lakis's earlier point is that all zoning gets revised over time. You know, it, it happens literally every year in our town, we're always looking to update or improve or revise some kind of zoning that's been around maybe for decades. So it's, you know, this is our start and in the years ahead, we find something's not working, well, the town has the power to go in and change it and make it work. So I think that's a really a good point to emphasize. And then finally, the last section is just to go back to Tim Jari's point is. This just buffs out kind of what can, what kind of accessory dwelling units can be allowed in the town center. And sets the parameters and requirements for that in that section. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if at this point you want to go and see if there's any one in the audience who wants to weigh in, who's called in? If we want to take a pause?
I will certainly entertain that. If there is anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard, could you please identify yourself? What's the trick, star six? May I share that with the other boards?
Yeah.
I know on mine, all I had to do is hit the mute button, it worked fine for me, but all phones are different, I guess.
Yeah, I think if you're trying to call in, it is star six to unmute. I think, we don't hear it from our end, but they might from theirs.
Okay.
I'm okay. Go ahead.
I hear somebody. Did somebody wish to speak?
I don't see anyone on the line other than us at the moment.
Okay, very good. Well, I do, I do want to note one thing, I, I believe. Ms. Larson sent along an email to the planning board. With a very detailed accounting from Mr. Segilnik, excuse me, I pronounce his wrong name, Mr. Segilnik. That I, I haven't had a lot of time to read, because it only arrived this morning to me. But I, I looked at it quickly, I think he's got some pretty good points in here and I think it'd be a good opportunity for us to review it. And then if we have any questions or want to challenge it against what the sound, the, this, this particular art, these particular articles are trying to drive towards, just to make sure they're aligned. It's, it's pretty comprehensive, it's, it's not bad. So hopefully, Mr. Segilnik can show up for the meeting if we have one in person next week, or I mean, next month, or has the opportunity to call in. Be certain to let him speak on that behalf. Other than that, I didn't receive any other comments from the public, I don't know Bernie if you have.
He's really the first, I've received a couple kind of general positive comments, but not as detailed as Mr. Segilnik's comments. That is, I did upload his comments to the Google Drive for the board to read. And as they come in, Emily, Emily and I will share them with the board as we get more of them. So we'll keep you posted on that. There's just two more quick articles to go through and then we'll be done. So let me just open up again, the next one, this is the one of, of course. It shut off my folder sharing ability, but the next one is, so of course, as we go through all this, we need to. Make changes throughout the zoning bylaw, the zoning bylaw parts that already exist to make it fit. Of course, to make it fit in, right? So, hold on. Technical difficulty, decided I don't want to be there, okay. It's back, can everyone see the article?
Yep, it's loading.
Loading.
Yes, sir, we can see it now, I can see it now.
Okay, so the purpose of this article, what I refer to as Article Three at the moment, it's our third article that we're discussing tonight at this public hearing. Is again, it's to make the changes throughout the bylaw that are going to have to incorporate the town center into them. So in this one, we talk about. This is to allow for buildings with zero setbacks, so you can have adjacent buildings sharing a party wall. The second section is related to parking and pretty much that long paragraph, all it, it's a very long way of saying, please refer to the town center district section U. To see what you need to do for your parking. It's just a long way of saying that, it looks, it looks intimidating, but really, we could, we could even maybe tighten it up a bit more. Then moving right along, this next one is a change to the parking requirements that require landscape strips. To be between different, let me see, between property lines, right? So when we talked about the whole combined parking lots, obviously, this would be a problem if you have to put a five-foot strip between your combined parking lots, it wouldn't be combined anymore. So we put this, we proposed this little touch up here at the end. That basically large lot, including the market, when we spoke about tonight, don't have to do this when they're crossing. Borders or town, excuse me, lot lines, I'm losing the plot, the lot lines. You don't have to put that border if it's a large site plan, basically. And then finally, again, under the signage section, it says refer to section U for your, all your signage needs for the town center, for your, how that's going to work. And then we've done a few tidied up items here. And then this section here probably is the most important, this is section seven, these are the, the triggers that trigger site plan approval by the planning board. So for Steve Rota Lakis's sake, I actually put in all of the language that it exists today, plus the ones we're proposing. So number five and six are brand new, and then seven, eight, nine continue as they are today. So any vertical or horizontal mixed use would trigger a site plan approval. And this was the part that hung up Steve last time, was any proposed development that contains or, that contains buildings or structures with combined gross floor area, old and new, exceeding seventy-five hundred square feet in the town center district. And the reason I wanted to put number seven there is so, not just Steve, but everyone can see that this is actually just a reflection of what exists already today. Under number seven, and almost word for word, any new development. And I spoke with the building inspector Patty Sheehan about this, and we had a long conversation about the language. Because Steve brought it up and I wanted to make sure I followed up on it. And she and I kind of, by the end, we agreed that the language that is being proposed in section six or number six is already what we have and what we've been using successfully for years. For regular site plan approvals and what it does is allows us, myself and, and the building and planning departments to have some leeway and discretion. About when this is triggered, but for the most part, it hasn't been an issue whatsoever. It's pretty obvious when somebody's adding an amount of parking or in this case, building space that exceeds the existing ten thousand square feet. So we didn't really have an issue with it, Patty didn't have an issue with it interpreting it. So I would leave it at that. I think Steve, if you can come up with different language, or if you can find it in a different town, I mean, I can keep looking myself, but. Our bottom line was that we have this language already and we're pretty much just duplicating it, but just making the threshold a little lower for the town center. So any, any questions about this one?
No, I appreciate your efforts though Bernie, to look into. No, I appreciate your efforts, though, Bernie, to look into it with the Ms. Sheehan.
Yeah, absolutely, I wasn't gonna let it go, so.
Okay.
No, it looks good.
Okay, uh, and then finally, um, wanna take a look at Article Four, can, did the uh map pop up for everyone?
Yep.
Okay, this is simply the proposed zoning district as it stands today, so. This is proposed, open for discussion, um. I don't know, there's not too much else to say about it, uh, you can see the existing limited business, and you can see the other existing zones, so. Um, if you have a concern or comment about it, um, if you don't have one tonight, just let me know later. So any questions about this?
I'm all set.
Nope.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone from the public online.
Okay.
So.
We'll take that as the, they've lost interest in us.
That's too bad. I find this the most interesting part, so. Um, but that's okay, I'll take it, I'll take it as uh everyone's really happy, so. Um. So the next one is actually, okay, so we're gonna jump ahead, this is another article that has nothing to do with the town center. Um, that's been come up, um, and this is to change. The um marijuana cultivators and craft marijuana marijuana cultivator cooperatives to include um. The limited industrial um zone, to allow them to take place in the. Uh, or I should say, set up shop in the limited industrial zone, if you look at this map, that is the uh darker blue area along Route Twenty, for the most part. Um, I guess, from what I understand, the phone calls have not been coming to my office, but I guess they've been going to selectmen and town managers saying. That what was approved two years ago was um. It's too limiting, so this one actually um. Will now mimic exactly what's happening for the testing laboratories. Um, these are not retail sales, this is all just um cultivation. So an all cultivation has to be inside, so there's no exterior cultivation. So the board has been asked to consider this, so are there any questions about this one?
No, I'm all set.
Fine.
No questions.
Hi Bernie, this is Purna.
Hi Bernie.
Bernie, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
You 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 said all cultivation has to be inside, I I wasn't sure quite uh sure what inside meant.
Uh, so it has to be, it can't be out in a field somewhere. It has to be four walls and a roof, basically, um, that is written into our bylaws already. Um, so all growing has to be in uh interior growing, so inside a building. We're not gonna have farm fields of um marijuana plants everywhere, so. Okay. So I'm gonna stop sharing this now, um. So that leads us to our final business of the night, Mr. Chairman, which is new business. Um, we have been, the planning board has been asked to um make a recommendation, let me pull it up here, for the. For the town to proceed with um the layout for Point Road and Nelson Point Road. So this is just to uh allow the board of selectmen on the fourteenth of April to move forward with um. Laying out the roads for Point Road and a portion of Nelson Point Road. So uh, there was a letter that was in your Google Drive that uh is from Andy Truman, Town Engineer. Stating that the engineering department, that they are satisfied with what's been done on the road um to date, that there is still a small punch list that they're going to come up with. Um, for the applicant to do, but that for the most part, all major issues have been taken care of, so what I need you to do is simply to vote, um. To recommend that the town proceed with the layout for Point Road and a portion of Nelson Point Road.
Okay, seems easy enough, Steve, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I just have a question, um.
Sure.
I was on the board, I think uh. Mr. Gordon and myself may have been the only two members that were on the board. They usually the, and I know it was an existing uh public way, that the applicant had to kind of realign. But isn't it usually the applicant's responsibility to do the road layout? Plan?
Um, that's, so they have, they submitted the road layout plan to engineering, so engineering had, sorry, I should've been clear. So the applicant did submit the ASBIL. And to engineering, engineering reviewed it, um, and they're still reviewing it, and I've been working with them, we finalized the last couple of. Um, things that they need to do, it's, some of it's engineering speak to me, but most of it. Um, from my understanding is all the major engineering aspects have been taken care of. Um, and there are some minor issues that they believe are not an issue to sort out in the coming weeks, so.
So but the applicant, that's on the applicant's nickel, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make. So I think that was part of the bond.
Yes, yeah, we're still holding a pretty substantial bond for that project.
Alright, then. I guess. What we're looking for, for emotion, for a motion is.
So at this time, you're gonna make a motion for the town to proceed with laying out the road, you're actually gonna get another bite at the apple next month, um, where your actually recommendation to accept the road will be taken. So you will get the layout plan between now and then, this is just for them to proceed with laying out the road, the selection.
I move that we uh. Again. I move that we authorize.
Recommend.
We, we, I move that we recommend that the town uh proceed with the layout plan. Uh, for the Nelson Place uh road uh realignment and subdivision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, I will poll the audience, uh, the members, I should say, uh, Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Rota Lakeus.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And I am in favor, so it's a four in favor. So you are good to go, Mr. Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board, um, before you sign off, I just wanted to say thank you to all the board members. Um, all the applicants and the um members of the public who tuned in tonight and participated. I know these are challenging times, and we really appreciate um all of you putting in the effort and all of your patience with this, um. We're getting it down, and um I think it went pretty smoothly, so. Congrats to all of you for your first meeting online, and um. Here's to not many more, I hope it wraps up.
I would, I would echo your comments, only to to say that um. If there are um comments um relative to um public hearings such as these, uh, please direct them. To the town manager's office, and he'll certainly uh convey them, cause it's not just our board, there's many boards that will be going through this. At least for the small foreseeable future, and anything that we can do to improve, I think would be a benefit for everyone. So at this time, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Before we. Before we concur, I'd like to adjourn, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Boulay and Mr. Cahill for doing a wonderful job, and keep letting it go smoothly, and. I think everything went well, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
I will poll the board, Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Rota Lakeus.
In favor.
And I am in favor, this, this meeting is adjourned, thank you all, and have a wonderful and safe night.
Thank you very much.